A Tuesday.
Recording in progress.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to this day, Tuesday, June 17th. We are live and recording. This is the Board of Commissioners, Board of Directors work session. This is Chair Catherine Harrington and currently I'm joined by Vice Chair Pam Trees, Commissioners Jerry Willie, Commissioner Jason Snyder. Commissioner Phi has reported in that she's five to 10 minutes late, so she will join us in progress. We are going to have a very full day today. The Commissioners have previously been alerted a few times to make lunch arrangements ahead of our meetings. We will likely only have a half hour lunch break. Clerk Moss, you've already made sure I am aware of testimony signups, but the full board may not know. Could you share that with us, please?
Yes, Chair Harrington, so we have a lot of people sign up. The question before you this morning is with all the topics on the agenda, the beginning of the board meeting. We have over about 15 people signed up at the beginning of the meeting. So most of these are regular comments, but then the majority else are related to item G3 on the resolution. So the question before you is, how would you like to?
Yep, so a couple of things. We have 13 public hearings and when people want to provide comment at public hearings, how long do we usually provide?
So we are providing two minutes a person for all the public hearings.
Okay, thank you.
The majority of the commenters are on F13 on the Maine County budget. And then we have a few on clean water services at the beginning as well.
Okay, so of the 15, the 15 you just mentioned are not included in F13?
Correct.
Or G3? Okay, so folks, we have a couple of different ways to go. We could stick to two minutes a person and only allow for five of those 15, or we could give them each one minute and keep it at 15 minutes total. What would you like to do or something altogether different?
I think it's difficult to convey anything in one minute. That would be my only observation or concern there. I'm not sure quite what to do to manage it. I think it's two minutes is about the minimum to be able to say anything meaningful.
I don't understand. Would you repeat what you said?
I think it's hard to con, like someone that wants to testify, I think it's hard to convey anything meaningful in under, under two minutes. Just seems like a very short time.
So five minutes, I mean, five people, two minutes each?
No, I think we need to be able to facilitate 15 minutes, 15 people because we do have a very long agenda and otherwise we're pushing them out a couple of hours.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, so extend it to the 30 minutes.
Well, can we shave some from the tail end there? Has anybody signed up at the end?
We have one person signed up at the end so far.
Why don't we just limit it to that then? People that signed up before, they will take all the people at the beginning and the people that had signed up at the end that are already pre-signed up.
Who's, is anybody we know at the end?
Bob Seward is the one signed up at five minutes at the end of the meeting.
I can talk to him at the beginning and see if he'd be willing to testify at the beginning for two minutes.
So the, the, the public hearings though, have, we allow for public testimony at those, don't we?
Yes, and the 15 people are not specific to any of the items F1 through F13.
I thought I heard F13 was the budget. We had a couple of one to respond to that.
Yes, the 15 does not include those who want to speak during public hearing.
Okay. Yeah, I think we facilitate it. You just go 30 minutes upfront, take care of the 15 people and ask the guy if he wants to do the five minutes. He wants to endure the two hours of meetings to get his five minutes in.
It'll be longer than two hours. And for the action items on item G3, would you like to hold a public hearing for that?
No. That would be my preference, no, but I'll defer to the two that were, the three of you that were at ACRE last night. You told me what.
I didn't stay for the whole thing. I left at quarter to late.
Jason, do you want to talk about that? I can start.
Yeah.
Is that where we are right now? I mean, if we want, I think that.
Yes, we're talking about the formal agenda. We're in topic one, so if everyone is with us and that relates to the topic that was at ACRE last night.
I guess as I'm asking what your preference is on making G3 a public meeting.
So first they're going to report out on how ACRE went. That's what Commissioner Trace was suggesting.
We took, we took a fair bit of public testimony last night in the meeting. We also heard from every member of ACRE, which also is important input. I think that, so your, your proposal, Commissioner Willie, is to make that a public hearing?
No, I was asking.
That's what she was asking, that if we do that, we would move, I don't know, 10 people from the beginning to that public meeting.
I think we need to talk about what the motions from ACRE were last night. So there were, so let's start there. At, there were two motions and for clarity, there are people here, Courtney, Tanya, others. So if I'm missing something, please, please fill in.
Can I first ask a question? Prior to my departure at quarter to eight, it did not seem obvious to me that ACRE members understood that we're in a situation of making the changes and doing the attestations so that over 3,400 households, which equates to about 5,000 plus people, would lose their housing vouchers, their rental assistance and potentially become homeless overnight.
Catherine, I can assure you that that was explained and reiterated numerous times.
It wasn't while I was in the room, so I'll just share that observation.
I think they came to understand it. I think what they're however, asking for is a little bit more time to allow us and them to be collaborative and thought, more thoughtful from their perspective on how we move forward, realizing there's still a July 1 deadline. That's what, that, that's what I would summarize in just words, but I think Pam should go through the.
I think that it is important to understand what the motions.
Yes.
So the motion, there were two motions on the table. There is, there are a series of motions that were brought forward and withdrawn. So there was some confusion about the process, but where we got to, and Courtney, I'd ask you to come to the table to make sure that I'm reporting this correctly because Courtney guided us through this last night. The, the first motion that was made was to not support the resolution. And our voting process by bylaws are that you vote, you either vote green, you, which means you agree. You vote yellow, which means that you can support but don't agree 100% and red, which is a stop. In the bylaws, it states that two reds from the, from the, the group would stop the motion. So the first motion was.
I believe the first motion was to recommend that a delay in consideration of the resolution today.
They're, they're asking both Jason and myself to come today and ask for a delay. And that, both Jason and I abstained from the vote. It was unanimous green otherwise. The second, the second piece was to say, thank you, that the, they did not support the resolution and wanted that message to come to the Board of Commissioners. That vote again, both Jason and I abstained and the vote was unanimous green. So just in that context of describing what happened at ACRE, there was a lot of discussion. There was a, there was a lot of discussion among the members. There was, we did take public comment from six different people for two minutes each. And it, it was robust is to, to understate the level of discussion. One key component that came out of the public comments as well as around the table was a piece of the resolution that implies that we will, what our relationship is to organizations that receive money and whether or not they in fact are, are compliant with federal laws.
Our recipients.
Yes, so that was a big piece that came out in the discussions. There was a long discussion about whether or not we had explored all paths to figuring this out without having to rescind the equity resolution. There were many questions about who we had talked to, what, what, what the injunctions meant. Courtney answered those questions, fielded all of those questions and did a great job. I appreciated that. But there is generally a sense that, and I'm going to, and Jason, I want you to, to follow up on this. The general sense was that ACRE did not want us to move forward with this resolution. But that was, but that was clear, obviously by, by the agreement from, in the, in the motion.
But for the record, Commissioner Phi has joined us at 9:13.
Thanks, Chair Harrington. So Jason, I'd like to hear your comments as well.
What I heard in particular related to the timing was that the feeling is this is coming fast, very fast. They wanted an opportunity, we, we have a retreat scheduled with the team this week, coming weekend. And one of their points was, why can't we be more involved in providing guidance to the solutions for this? Given that we have a retreat coming up on Saturday. And that was, that got a little bit of airtime related to just the timing of all of this. And I think by the end of the meeting, there was an understanding that there's a lot at risk for our community in terms of resources and the support for households and also, and ask that we try to be a little bit more collaborative with them to figure out how to navigate through this in a way that they all can help support and get the county and our community through this relatively traumatic time.
And I would ask Tanya, Courtney, anybody else to add any other thoughts that we may have missed here?
In all fairness, I think there is, there is still a general kind of, I would say, lack of understanding of the risk the county is in. And also, at this point, depending on what your board does, that does mean that our recommendation is that we do not sign any contracts.
The other, the other piece, I guess, as I'm reflecting and I was listening to the county administrator talk about this. I, I think there's definitely a recommendation that we as a county, regardless of what we're doing about attestations, that we consider being in a more fight posture or a litigate posture. That was the other feedback.
Litigation is a pretty deep hole right there.
And I would second what Tanya said about lack of understanding. There's awareness, I believe, and Chair, when I answered your question about were they, was it communicated? I believe that it was communicated and there's awareness, but understanding is a different level of.
Understanding.
Yeah, I have understanding, I guess. So that, you know, that, and that is also influenced by the timing aspect in my, in my, in my view.
So it was my understanding that part of why we were setting this up for today is so that all five of us could participate. I'm fine if we don't want to move on it today. Great, I don't have to sponsor it at all and you guys can take it up whenever you want. Another thing that had been expressed in our problem solving on the timing was to make sure that you had an opportunity to go over this with ACRE ahead of the retreat because you already had plans and I've not, I've just pulled out my phone to check the agenda for that retreat. You wanted to be able to go over the access and opportunity approach and use ACRE to build the subsequent things that we need to adopt and do that in short order. So, you know, we've already been over. We do not have the current resources to quote unquote, fight the way some in our community are asking us to. What we have asked is for our staff to continue to engage, to see how that goes. We've also had discussions about the difference between temporary injunctions versus permanent, what it, what it may involve to be a named party, so on and so forth. And we don't currently have the resources for that, so.
I feel the other thing I think is important, like we're reporting out what happened. We provided some information and have, I think we all will have opinions that, and perspectives that we want to share. But just in reporting.
Only if we have a motion on the floor.
Doesn't mean I'm advocating for it.
Advocating for fighting, is that what you're trying to?
Yeah.
Litigate, yeah.
Well, I think, Tanya, to your comment about if we don't do it today, we're not signing contracts. I don't think that's a very good option either. I think that was what was driving our conversation last week was we have to do this so we can sign the contracts by June 30. It has a 50 plus million dollar impact.
Whatever decision your board makes today, staff will be huddling, relooking at our special fund reserves. The majority of our federal funds are in special funds and determining cash flow basis for those special funds. And all we can do is identify risk when you're in a contractual relationship with another entity. We, there, as we've expressed before the board, County Council has done the risk analysis. We can identify the risk and we're not, we don't have a crystal ball on what the federal government will or could do in this case.
And we don't have enough surplus to last the whatever, how long that takes.
So what we've communicated last, last night and previously, we feel that we can, there is, there's a reimbursement lag with signing contracts by the time you sign a contract with the federal government when you get the funds. Right now, our renewal period where July and August is our highest contract recall. These aren't new grants. This is just general operating dollars for the county. We use this period of time in the reserves to cash flow. So I'm not prepared with a financial analysis to let you know based on federal funds and funding stores, how long we can cash flow in this conversation. But cash flow, when we do look at federal funds, once that cash flow is complete, at whatever point, that means we stop that service, we lay off employees because we do not have the general fund reserves or general fund, unless it's up to your board to relook at the budget and what services we fund.
So we had, we had tried to set up this conversation so that we weren't having to wait over and over and over again for more information and so that we had enough facts on the table so that we could provide for clarity and go from there. Certainly, we could have continued to wait and wait and wait and wait, right? The information we are getting from staff evolves from one day to the next based upon the best available information they have. So we could get stuck, some call it analysis paralysis and just never do anything. I agree with you, Commissioner Willie, that we do have a choice between acting now or risking a lot, which would be done on the backs of our employees, in my view, on the backs of our employees and on the backs of the people whose services are available because of. So I'm back to, okay, this is the report out from ACRE of what would you like to do? How are you leaning? Because at this juncture, I don't have a reason to sponsor the resolution with just two of us.
Well, I think.
Because there's more at stake, remember? Legal also let us know about whoever does the attestation, right? That the president's actions have deputized every citizen in the United States to call into question if we've made the move appropriately. That's why we need ACRE's help and a lot of people's help in addition to our own legal counsel to make sure that we do things well per the Civil Rights Act and the other federal laws that are in place.
So I'd like to make another statement, personal statement, and that is that I stated last night at ACRE, I'll state it here again, that my job as a commissioner is to look to serve the, all of our community and especially the vulnerable people within our community. I've looked at the risk profile. I am in support in general of the action where I am right, and I made that perfectly clear last night. What I'm not comfortable with is how we have handled the communications within our community. And I, I understand all of the reasons why. I understand that where we have been put in this position. The other thing that I clearly stated last night is that we are not fighting against each other on this issue. We have a common, we're in a foxhole together against the federal government and the work that's being done at that level. So it's clear to me that we have to find the place where, where we, where we have commonality here. And that's what we have not done yet. I can't guarantee that by delaying a week or two weeks that that would occur, but it would give voice to people in the meantime. And that's, that's where I am. We are in a situation where when I look at the resolution under, I think it's, it's I, one I, the redirect organizations and policies advancing DEI and DEIA toward ensuring compliance with and advancement of all applicable federal, state, civil rights laws and regulations. I am not comfortable with that piece of the resolution. And if, and Alex, I see you moving, I, I will appreciate a comment here. And that's the piece that I've heard from community, community-based organizations that I've worked with and I trust that they are concerned about. The other piece in here is if we were, if we were to do this, how, how do we, how do we do that? And what, what does it, how does it commit cities? How does it commit others that receive funding from us? So I am, I am lacking clarity on key components of the resolution that also make me worry about making a decision today. So Alex, would you please comment?
Yes, Commissioner, so hopefully this will bring a little clip. We talked about this internally this morning with Tanya's team. None of us read that, organizations, organizations outside the county. I acknowledge that that's not, but looking at that in the following paragraph, I too. You know, it's our opinion that you can lose 5-1 entirely. You can delete 5-1 entirely and still get to the same place and allay the concerns about the county attempting to assert control over community organizations, which is inappropriate.
Okay, that's helpful. That's helpful, but that's a piece that we, by agreeing to this today, we don't have the opportunity to communicate with, with all of those organizations.
I, I would like to see us act on something by no later than the business meeting next week. I would have preferred for all commissioners to be present. Reality means that, you know, likely when action's taken, either Chair Harrington or myself will be not in the room if we move back today. I think that's unfortunate, but we also have a commission of more than, you know, more than one person so that we can still move the business forward. I think that the timing and the, the, the ask is reasonable about one week. I'm not willing to wait much longer than that. Though I do believe that by the end of next week, which would be the last business meeting or July 1st, we need to have taken meaningful action. I think the ACRE retreat may need to be reevaluated from a what's on the content perspective. I would want to be leaving that discussion with something that works for us operationally, planned forward, that works for us operationally with the county's leadership team and also meets our community's needs. And I'm using community to mean the ACRE representatives that are representing a broader group in our community. That would be my hope that we leave with some sort of a framework that allows us to get there and take action next Tuesday that can be better supported by, by broader group of the community. That's my thinking. I don't want to wait until mid-July. I, I guess if you all were like, we can get much better stuff done the first week or second week of July while I'm gone, that's fine. But I, I tend to think that their ask was for, for a week and I think we figure out what we can do in that time and we luckily have a retreat.
In all fairness, I don't think that there was a timeframe on the ask for a delay. I've just, I just wanted.
I didn't hear that in any of the motions. I heard that they recommended a delay. I didn't hear any delay and I heard that they don't support the resolution and both of those motions were unanimous.
So some of the context of the discussion was, we have a retreat. Why aren't we working this issue at the retreat? So I am, it may not reflect in the motion. There was a lot of sloppy motion making last night, just to be honest. But I, I'm, I'm speaking more from some of the verbal statements and sentiment that, hey, we've got this opportunity, why not try to use it to the best effect of the county?
And I agree that a retreat is on the county calendar with zero agenda and zero logistics. So how, we're going to say with a straight face that the public has visibility into that and that is the place where this quote unquote, resolution is going to be worked? I don't know.
I don't know that the resolution would get worked. I, what, what I see happening in that discussion, at least from my perspective, would be a discussion about how we get to where we need to go from a, in a framework type of discussion and perhaps what might be coming in the future that could be planned for. And we as a commission would then have to. And we, as a commission, would then have to rework the resolution in order. That's my, that's, that's one, one person's perspective.
I guess I'd ask legal counsel, what? Where does that take us? It seems to me that a considerable amount of research and time has been invested already on this. We are in a time crunch. We will be, you will be here on the 27th, correct? Okay, so we'll be one person short on the 27th.
There's no post, um, next week's meeting is the 24th? And there are no other board meetings set up in 20-day?
Yeah.
Okay.
I used my Catherine calendar, I used the, the.
January?
Yeah.
You meant January 27th, is that it?
So yeah, I stand corrected, the 24th?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm of the mindset that community involvement is important. And certainly engagement's important. But this is one of those things that I think we have done considerable amount of good homework on. And this isn't like, we make this decision and then it's done and we walk away from organizations, from individuals, from the vulnerable, we're not doing that. We begin the next dialogue of how best do we function in this political environment? And so I don't see anything that we're going to do coming down the pike. I certainly would not advocate we completely revamp this resolution and start over again. I think it's, I think it's sad that we are in this spot. But again, I trust our staff that they have done the homework that's necessary on this. And I think we need to adopt this resolution and then begin a second tier of engagement with our community about how best we function.
That second part may be more strained than is being recognized here. Many members of ACRE last night said, if that happens, why would we even have a retreat? Do you even need us?
The very reason that I stated that we begin the second chapter of dialogue. Because this is not a one and done deal. We know there's more coming. This is going to be a very difficult year or three years. So why they wouldn't disengage at that point in time is because there's a lot more to be done.
Yeah, they want to feel as if they're partners.
Right.
And collaborative and that they're helping work through this, not having things done to them.
Yes, but they wanted to find all of the terms. And we're not in the situation of just defining the terms. And so I think our situation is being misrepresented and misunderstood. I had a really useful but short conversation with John L. Bell of Espousal Strategies, who was the consultant that we were fortunate to utilize to help us develop the equity resolution, which was also developed in pretty short order. He engaged with us, the board, and we had some training conversations, I'm not training sessions, but conversations as a board in late August and into September. We, with his assistance, set up a community-based community engagement and did that very effectively in December and January. And the terms of the resolution and order were still in flux and under development and, and settling out through the end of June into February 20th, the date that it was unanimously adopted by this board. And that began our, our journey, formally began our journey into what was a transition. And we've had to do that together as a board and with various aspects of our community. There was a lot said last night about the timing of all of this and the would have, could haves. My, my words would have, could haves. And our staff has done us a great deal of positive service in trying to analyze things and bring us the real information, real impacts that they see. We are on a journey together, like it or not. Where as an agency, if we're going to accept federal funds, we're going to have to make some changes. We're, if we want to accept these federal funds, we are going to have to comply with the latest federal laws, which includes the current executive orders. And we, as a board, don't yet know the exact nature of what we're going to be forming. We do know that we are going to have to rescind our current equity resolution. And I talked to John L. about that. And he said, he reminded me that in history, the whole civil rights era and continued equity improvements, there has always been these waves of two steps forward, one step back. And he offered to me that, yes, this very much feels like you're in a situation of one step back. But that means we've still made forward motion. We do still hold true to our values. My values have not changed. How I have to go about exercising those values is what has changed. And I still have to go through the same process with all of you on the board, with community, to figure out how we do that in a fashion that continues to honor the federal laws that we are required as elected officials to adhere to. We've taken oaths of office. So I very much appreciate his counsel. His, I won't go so far as to call it a vote of confidence, but an, an offer of support that he said he is here for us and with us to help us on this continued journey. And this is why I think Commissioner Willie is right. If we wait, I'm, I won't be waiting, right? I won't be here next week, so no skin off my back. But it would be on yours. Right? The impact that it could have on not only our community members, but also on our staff. We've done our best to put the work in, given the timing. But I just want to be clear that I hear the ACRE members. I continue to really appreciate their concerns. And we do need them to continue to exercise their voice as part of community to help us navigate this very complex journey. But we don't get to define the terms.
It is the ultimate in irony that we are going to hopefully be proclaiming Juneteenth today and also rescinding our equity resolution on the same day.
Yes. We don't have to do a proclamation on Juneteenth. It's state, it's a state holiday, whether or not we make a proclamation or not. These are our choices.
I would like to make another statement, and that is that I respectfully the work that the staff's done. And I respect the information that you've brought, you've brought forward. It is, it is our responsibility to have the opportunity to communicate with the communities as, and that is the place that I need this extra week. And I will also say that I don't believe that this resolution is, we, we do need to make some changes from my perspective as per the discussion with Alex on whether or not we eliminate a, a paragraph here. Not only do we need discussion on that, if we in, in fact, select that option, we need the opportunity to communicate that, that change to the public as well. So I am, and I, with all due respect to the chair and the fact that she has demonstrated leadership in bringing this forward, there is no question about that. The space that we're in is not allowing the, the community, the community piece for me. And I'm, I'm going to state that, and I believe that we have seen this in our past history, and we need to make sure that we are having these discussions. I will also restate that what my position is as a commissioner is to support the essence of this discussion. We have to get funding to our most vulnerable people. But in the meantime, we also have to have the appropriate time and ability to communicate. A week is, that, it's not much time, but it's also a signal. And it's also says to our community, we understand the impacts here and we're willing to listen. And that's why I'm going to be asking for a week delay.
I think you're asking for a lot more input to basically revamp and rewrite this document. And I think you're opening the door for something you don't know what's on the other side. I think if you don't like 5A, I, is that what the, is that the paragraph you don't like?
It's not that I don't like it, it's whether or not it's appropriate for the county to, it implies a relationship with our community-based organizations that was not intended to imply that. That's my, that's my concern.
Is.
We could approve that with a straw today, though.
Yeah, we could, so what is?
Without the ability to communicate with our community-based organizations that have expressed the concern.
Well, I have one in front of me that specifically refers to 5I. Is that the one that you're talking about?
We heard from, I believe that would be community action that you're looking at. And yes, we, I believe we all got that communication. The other, we heard from several of the people providing public comment last night on the same issue.
So we can, and based on legal counsel, we can strike 5I?
And I state again, without the opportunity to communicate that to our community-based organizations, to move from here to, to that change, I'm not comfortable.
Commissioner Phi, you've been very quiet, and I want to ask, because you also asked for a delay. If a, it does a, can you, can you commit and agree that a week is enough time to meet your requested delay needs so that you can do the work that you feel like needs to be done, so you could act next week and perhaps be, you know, in a place where you can support unanimously?
Thank you, Commissioner Snyder. I apologize for the delay walking in here thirteen minutes later than our meeting's start time.
If you're not going to talk less, now click the mic closer, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Harrington. Can you all hear me now? Is it better? Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Snyder, for tapping me into this conversation. I was just expressing my apologies for coming in late. In terms of this discussion, yes, we are in a predicament. We have a federal, a new federal administration putting on a lot of demands on the table. So I do think an alternative resolution to comply not only local, state, and federal laws, but as we are heading into these new executive orders. I think what county council needs to put a white paper together on is this, some of these executive orders do compete and contradict some of the state laws. So which ones are we picking and choosing to comply with? I was reading all night last night, left and right, on this letter that was released on June 5th, 2025, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, where, you know, the, the, miss, it's been expressed of the delineations of what these HUD, if you're going to get money from HUD, what you're required to comply with. And I'm not really convinced Washington County isn't a federal agency. So we, if we're going to accept money, we have to comply with the conditions that are being set. But they are, we're not going to comply with them if they're in contradictory to the state laws here. So I think that's a question that needs to be answered by county council is what executive orders that are, are, are we, one, we, we're, we can't comply with all the executive orders because they're contradictory to the state laws. The state of Oregon is a sanctuary state. So I think we need some clar, um, some guidance from county council in collaboration with the state of Oregon and where the state is heading on that part. In terms of the HUD part, I don't, I don't see the need to rescind the equity resolution. I hear the proposal on the table, I don't see. I do see, though, an alternative solution is needed, which is a creative way to get our money to our communities. And I think there is an alternative. I agree, the preliminary injunctions are just that preliminary. I don't know what the results are, ODOT's preliminary injunction, not ODOT, DOT's preliminary injunction. There was a hearing yesterday, I don't know what the results are. I think there is one scheduled for HUD preliminary injunction. So I do agree, I'm making that comment to say, I agree with you, these are just a temporary. And we don't know what the permanent solution would look like. So we do, in the meantime, need to identify a resolution. But that doesn't mean we need to roll over and be in contradictory with our own state laws. So I do see an alternative solution to meet these executive orders that are not in contradictory or in, in, not incongruent with the state laws. And I don't see the need to rescind our equity resolutions. I think there, I think we, there is an opportunity to, to, to lean in here and to figure out a creative way to resolve. So in a nutshell, Commissioner Snyder, I am willing to be on this journey. I appreciate the week delay. I think I, I appreciate you all listening to the community and pausing for a sec and come up with an alternative resolution, not necessarily one that rescinds the equity resolution, because there's nothing in there that says we are out of compliance. I don't see how we use rental vouchers money to do DEI work. I don't see that. So I, I, I think we, we just need to have more, a bit more conversation of we're not a federal agent, we're a local government in a state. We do need these federal dollars. We have to meet some of these demands, but in accordance of the current laws in our state and in our local government. We should not give up our local authority. So I think that's where I am. So I'm willing to get on this journey to see what the new resolution will look like.
At most, you're going to have one week.
Yeah, I think.
But, but she's been very clear, she doesn't see a need to rescind the equity resolution. So the answer to your question is no, she would not agree to the form of the current resolution. She's looking for an alternative resolution that does something that runs counter to our legal experts and everything that we have heard about as recently as last Thursday.
Can county council comment on the state and federal law conflict and all? And also the piece that Commissioner Phi is suggesting that? I I know we've been kind of through this, but I think it's important to be super clear for the community. There's the state federal law conflict potentially, and then there's the statement that we're not using these funds to.
I will say, Commissioner Snyder, the executive orders are not laws. They're presidential executive orders. So we have federal laws, we have state laws, we have local laws, and then now we have federal executive orders from the White House. So I think there are distinctions. And and every administration, I'm sure, has federal executive orders, right? I think some of that language and the grant, federal grants is not new, but what's new is the DEI portion.
So I'll say this. I was willing to step forward and display leadership by putting a resolution in front of all of you to act on today because of the legal advice that we've been given, which includes that executive orders have the weight of federal law and the the harm and impact that of not doing these attestations would serve. So it is now seven minutes to the hour. Here is what I recommend. I'm pulling my sponsorship of G three. I will not be sponsoring item G three.
And that's because you believe we do need to wait another week and have this conversation?
No, because there are only two of us who have expressed any willingness to act today. That is why.
Can I ask a a question beyond that? If we removed five I, would this, would the vote balance change?
I don't know. Commissioner Tree said no, she would not be voting for it today.
I don't think we're supposed to be counting noses in this particular environment, are we?
No, but I don't have to put you all in the situation of acting today is what I'm saying.
I understand that. I'm trying to find a spot where we make a commitment to move forward with community conversations and how this all plays out and everything else. And I do not want to put this resolution back out on the desk as if we are going to consider modifications to this resolution that our legal staff has put together. And I do not want to work through that spaghetti, and that's exactly what it'll be. I've I'll liken it to the conversation we have at the S H S meetings with President Peterson at Metro, where after one of the meetings, I said, it felt like we were trying to solve world peace when we were dealing with S H S dollars. That's where this, I believe, is going to go. And I'm concerned about that. So having said that, and believing that this is the right direction we go at this time with, again, not closing the door, but opening the second chapter to this conversation and discussion, that we should consider removing five I. We should pass this resolution, and then we should move into next week with what does that look like?
It's G three, item G three.
Yes, he's talking about resolution item five I.
Five I in the.
Probably needs to be.
And it says redirect organizations and policies advancing DEI and DEIA toward ensuring compliance with and the advancement of all federal and state civil rights laws and regulations. We can remove that and based on legal counsel. Just we do that, and we move ahead.
My preference would be to listen to our community and wait until next week. If you, if it is.
What you said earlier.
Yes, but this is the maybe the 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 further is if this is put before me today, I will probably support making sure that our most vulnerable community members are taking care of it. It is not my preference to do that, but if I am forced to make a decision today, that would probably be my decision.
Um, staff, I've gone out on a limb here. But I don't know if staff continues to have the facts that allow me to do that.
I don't understand that question. I'm sorry. Your statement.
Yeah, the the what I heard last night is was less clear about the impacts to our community than what I had heard previously. And I'm not sure what message I've heard from Ms. Angie this morning about the impact. So, you know, we took what I thought was as much clarity as we could have taken and watered it down in the face of resistance. I don't like the situation that I've been put in and called to task by people that I have stood up for and continue to stand up. I think that certain individuals have fomented lack of clarity for their own political voices. And you know, I don't have to stand firm that the picture is clear to me.
So let me be clear. Last night, we spoke to the impacts, the the grants that are in front of us right now. Also, what was spoke to is the remaining operating grants come in July and August. So we are facing the sim a similar situation. The federal government, the the administration has instructed all departments to implement the executive orders. We have heard from county council before that executive orders are law until they're not. I'm going to repeat that they're law until they're not. So whether we like it or not, we are seeing language of the executive orders within the grants and contracts. Excuse me, we are required to sign, and we will be required to sign coming up. As I said earlier in this conversation, at this point, I'm going to instruct staff to not sign the contracts. We risk criminal and civil and civil, not just for the individual signing, but also for the organization. And in fact, I had a community member yesterday tell me that I should be willing to risk that. So like we, this is not a subject that we is like on your strategic plan or your work plan for us to discuss. These are circumstances that have fallen on our lap. We do have a choice. Your board can choose not to sign these agreements, and we walk away from these services. There's also been the question, would the state pick up? Can the state help? We're facing, and in your budget, you received the document yesterday from Aaron Kever, the follow up of clarity that community corrections is going through additional cuts because the state did not fund community corrections to the level. This is above the thirteen percent of cuts within their budget, in addition to impacts to law library. I was just also on a call with NACO and NACA, the National Association of County Administrators. They are projecting within the federal budget that outside of defense spending, there will be a cumulative impact of twenty three percent in reduction. This will be impacting counties. Don't know what that means yet, so I'm not illustrate, but there is more. There are more reductions, and there are more costs coming. And so that's where it's been clear, we don't have the reserves to take over these fun, these services.
I've heard that loud and clear. I just want to make ask for one clarification. You said earlier and again in this, the past minute or two, that if we did not do this today, you would not sign contracts. If we do it next Tuesday, will you sign contracts?
With with actions in place that we are showing a roadmap to align to the contract terms we are seeing. I'm saying contract terms, I'm not saying federal orders. Contract terms that we are seeing to provide assurance to the county.
Okay. So one other thing to that then, and this goes more to Jason and Pam. You put this document out for evaluation and review by ACRE and by other community members. And we're going to get back something that our staff will not have time to vet to see if it's even doable by next Tuesday. Because you're doing this on the weekend. And they'll have basically one day to say, yeah, we can do that, or yeah, no, we can't. We have a document that they've authorized.
And if I mean, if there are things that we believe are do not put the organization on the right path to be able to sign the contracts, we will be in another time crunch to communicate with community on those issues. And and your board, frankly.
We don't have time for that.
And and I can tell you that the intent was not to reopen the resolution with the exception, from my perspective, of the singular piece that we talked about. The piece that I am concerned about is the community temperature and the community lack of trust when we make these decisions in a perceived, and I'm going to underline perceived, vacuum, whether it's taking this out today and not communicating before a vote. I believe that this puts us on a path that is not sustainable for this county. My request is for a week, and I have already said to you, I commit to the understanding of what I've learned here. I believe that executive orders are laws. I believe in the risk factor that has been put forward here. I believe in funding our most vulnerable communities. I also know that we I need a little bit of time for the communication and the venting procedure that needs to happen in our community for us to move forward. That is my sole purpose in asking for this.
So I think we need to cease our work session at this point and move to our Housing Authority Board of Directors meeting and our Board of Commissioners Board of Directors meeting. We have a long day in front of us. I will not be sponsoring the full resolution today. That's just all there is to it. We can certainly allow for some board communication at that time instead to explain what direction you would like to give to staff to move forward. And then onward to another day. But we do have budget work we need to get to in our formal meetings this morning. Okay. All right, so we're going to pause this work session here and reconvene for later in the day, whenever that may be. We've all been put on notice that this is going to be a long day, and everyone was expected to ensure that they were available till five P M. Thank you. See you in ten minutes. We'll convene at quarter.